We are on. Tonight, we'd -- Steve, do you want to introduce the --
Sure. Um, tonight, the council has been wanting to set up some larger picture goals. And so we asked, I discussed with the council to have Primex come in and facilitate this session with the council. We have Rick and Shelley from Primex here tonight to assist with the process.
And Primex is?
Primex is our insurance carrier for liability and workers' compensation. They used to be Comp Funds of New Hampshire, now Primex. And so they provide the service for free. And I've done this process in other communities and worked very well. So this is a council goal-setting session, so it's going to turn it over to them and they can kick it off.
Great. Well, thank you. Good evening. Glad to be here tonight. Thanks for having us. Steve Seaman, this is Rick Alpers. This is Shelley Waltz. We're part of the Primex team back in Concord. But again, we're really pleased to be here tonight. The goal of tonight is, who's a small agenda in front of you, is to, you know, talk about council goals over the next year or so, really take a look at larger goals that can be achieved, hopefully put some manageable dates around them. That's really the long-term goal tonight. We'll move as quickly as we can. I know it's already getting late and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you have sort of a goal end time. I don't want to exceed it or?
Why don't we shoot for around nine or earlier and see what happens?
Yeah, I think we, I think that's achievable, so I'll try and respect that time to make sure we can do it. So what you have in the agenda in front of you, again, introductions, and some people might say, why does Primex get involved in these goal-setting sessions from like a risk management standpoint? So what we find is, more often than not, when we work with boards of selectmen, town councils, city councils like yourselves, if they're very organized at the top, the rest of your organization is organized as well. You know, when you have good operating boards and governing bodies at the top, the rest of your community and the rest of your organization operates very well all the way down to the bottom, from the air and then the center. It's why we do these things. It helps, you know, keeps communities organized, keeps them on task, and it actually helps reduce risk in the workplace, believe it or not, over and over again. And the big risk when it comes to you isn't always just workers' compensation, it's liability. And that's where the real, real, sort of the risk of the elephant in the room is at times. That can be quite costly to a company like us and then ultimately to you as you pay your premiums to us. So we'll spend the next hour and a half or so going through that, so you have, see a smaller agenda in front of you. Introductions we've done, review of agenda real quick, you know. I just, hopefully the homework assignment helped you. I'm not sure if you've ever done any goal-setting collectively as a group before, but I just really, the whole point of the homework assignment was, I'm not asking to recite that here individually tonight, was just get the juices flowing, was to think about, okay, what are New Market's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats? You know, what are those threats out there? The seacoast is vibrant, you have communities around you that are doing well, just like you're doing well also. So you have competition between different communities, attracting good residents, retaining good residents, attracting economic development between neighboring communities. There's quite a competition here on the seacoast currently. So what are those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats? And lastly, what are some goals that you want to see your community, this council, achieve over the next year or so? That's really what tonight is all about. And that's, hopefully that homework assignment got the juices flowing for you, because it's hard oftentimes when you show up to these things at seven fifteen on a Wednesday night and I say, give me a goal. And everyone sort of stares at me for the first fifteen minutes or so, and it's sort of crickets in the room. So hopefully that get the juices flowing. Would you agree that helped a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, good. So to get the juices flowing even more, just to set a positive tone a little bit, why don't you tell me what's going well in New Market right now? What, what are you doing right? Where are you succeeding right now? Don't be shy. One at a time. Let's go.
I'll go first.
Okay. Yeah, it's all good.
I shouldn't go first, but I would. I would say that one of the things that we're doing really well is, is we have a team of staff, administrators, department heads, people that work for this town that have phenomenal integrity.
Shelley, I'll put, good employee integrity, just so we can. Best thing is, this is being recorded, right?
Yep.
So we can go back and watch if we miss anything. It's great. Usually they're not recorded at all, so I'm like wicked psyched about that right now. So, you know, we do exodus, it's on like a, I do exit, it's on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock in the old town hall across the street, so, you know, usually trying to take really good notes. So what else is going well here in New Market?
We have a vibrant downtown.
What do you mean by that?
Uh, we have diverse businesses, new restaurants, new businesses. We have the mill businesses that were, or the mills that were recently renovated into different businesses and residences and art space also. So, got a lot going on.
It looked great. My ride-in tonight, to be honest with you, we went to the, Steve's recommendation, the Oak House. It was really good. What else? Going well here in New Market?
I think we have a good reputation within the local, like, area.
Okay.
As like a good community. And to be local, yeah.
I apologize now for my handwriting. It's like a four-year-old, but I've tried over the years and it never got any better. So what else?
Um, not to just single it out, but we have a really great rec center that has lots of programs for every age.
I think along with that, going well necessarily, the strength of certain of our community is the natural resources that we have, and we have the river, we have the bay, we have trails.
Right.
Right.
Yep, good. It's a, it's a, they would say, if you were to do some reading, they would say millennials, it's a big attractor into that millennial generation where they can live, work, and play, essentially, right? That motto that we all hear time and time again, it's like, I need to go to work, I can go out, grab a bite to eat, but then I can hit a trail and do some exercising and stuff.
I think one of our strengths is, or the quality would be, our public safety. And their dedication to the town.
I'll even call it specifically from, we had an organization come in and do like an efficiency study for us, that we have somehow managed to buck the trend and maintain a volunteer fire department.
Wow.
First act.
It's gonna be public in like fifteen minutes.
What's the population of New Market?
About nine thousand.
Yeah, nine to ten.
And so you contracted your EMS?
No, we all volunteer. We have two full-time firefighters.
You have bucked the trend. I'll give you a pat on the back for that. You have bucked the trend.
Currently, the town is affordable.
In what ways? Affordable to live, like to buy a house or?
Yeah, I think one of the major reasons New Market has grown is because we're, our location, you know, proximity to the seacoast, is between Exeter, Durham, fifteen minutes from Portsmouth. And you can buy a condo at the golf course or a home, I don't know if they call them homes or condos here, for probably forty to fifty percent less than if you bought the same one that's being built now in Greenland on that par three.
Really?
So, you know, the pricing on property here currently is affordable. Tax rate, the flip side of that is the tax rate is higher than most around or certainly healthy. And it, and it will most probably be going up. So that's the, that's the balance.
Yep. Okay. What else?
I have written down other things like the character of a small town, the history, like the, you know, it's character. I mean, it's not just a small town feel, we have a different character. The history of this town is really important. There's a lot of long-time families that have been here for hundreds of years. They're, we're close-knit and there's a lot of pride in this town.
Good character, good history, has a story.
I think the boards, the councils within the town have been, have been good. I mean, I don't think there's, New Market hasn't made the news because one faction is against another faction. You have a nice spectrum of philosophies within the council and boards. And one thing that's gotten noticeably better is if you went back two and three years, you tended to have, you know, a school, a school board that would tend not to have or have any conservatives represented, say, on that. People of conservative viewpoints, you tend to have a town council that tended to be dominated by conservative viewpoints. And the range has increased on both, and I think that the, you know, we have, I think that's why I leave that, is we have a good set of councils and boards we could use. Some of them have some openings, but in general, I think the quality of the people that are participating in right now is very good.
Good elected official Shelley from?
Yeah, not just elected, too. Some of it is appointees, volunteers.
Yep.
You know, I'll use another example, the dam committee, I mean, we've got engineers and experts that have volunteered on that. People didn't know, so I think that, that's really helpful to the town to have that kind of volunteer effort going on.
Just for you two, it's a dam, G A M, committee.
We saw it outside. Shelley wanted to know if she can get on it. So, yeah. We did, we did see that, there was a thing on that.
There are days that we come out.
Things that need work, hunts.
Is it like the McKellen Dam?
Yeah.
I would also like to add that it's a, it's a great town and community for families, younger families. It's a great town for people looking to move in, settle down.
Yep.
There's a lot to offer, and it's continuing to grow that way, which is pretty exciting.
Good. What else? Anyone else? Before we flip over to the other side? The dark side, yeah. And oftentimes, in government, that's where we stare at a lot most of the time, which is what needs work. And sometimes we forget to focus on what we've done well and sort of, I use the word celebrate, but you have to every once in a while. I'm an elected official in my own community, and sometimes you have to take a step back and be like, no, no, we've done some stuff here. It's not, we still have the mountain over here, which never seems to get to the top of it, but. Anything else going once, going twice? Okay.
Well, the only thing that, it's kind of adds to what Phil said, that we have a good reputation around the town, but what I think you need to ask people, residents of the town, how is their town being run? How is the government working in their town? And how is, you know, the overall health of the town? You know, they may have concerns, but they're, they're happy with the way the town is being operated now. I don't know if that's quite captured.
It started with integrity.
No, that was more personal.
They just, they feel like things are going well and that, that, you know, we have to act against.
Yep.
That's a, that's a good way.
Got it. Good. Anybody else? All right. So on the flip side of it, we talked, you know, like we just said, we talked for minutes about what's going well in a market. And? I want to phrase it in a way that, you know, we're not going to have a negativity session here for the next fifteen, twelve, fifteen minutes, but, you know, what, what needs work? What still needs a little bit of attention? What needs that final push to get it to the finish line that you might think that New Market needs to succeed in? What, what still needs work? And it might be the balance of what, Mr. Chairman, what you said about, you know, affordable to live here, but keeping an eye on the tax rate to ensure that the community does remain affordable to live here. Because that is, people do look at that when they jump from community to community, what is the tax rate of the community? So what needs work? What might need some attention?
Well, it's, it's being worked on, and it's not the purview of this committee, but, you know, I think the, sort of the elephant left out there is the school facilities are rough. We haven't had things done to the school for a long time. And, and there has been a lot of, again, excellent work by a, by a group of citizens that have worked very hard on coming up with proposals for the school facilities, but it's, that's going to add to the tax burden if it passes. And if it doesn't pass, people will be really discouraged because so much effort is put into addressing the facilities efficiencies.
Good.
And, I mean, some work has been done, as we said, in the last few years to bring it up to safety codes and things like that. It's not the ultimate solution, but.
Enough to ban it for a little bit.
This is going to sound trite, especially following that, but I think it's really important, parking, proper businesses in town.
Yep.
Like we have for years, and now the more businesses we have, the worse it's getting, having a parking issue down there.
Can add to that, the roads aren't great.
Roads. Yeah, I mean, it was, when I came into town at five, when I came into town at five o'clock, it's a Wednesday night, November 30th, I mean, most spots were taken, you know, in a hurry for a while. So that's a good thing, but also you have to meet the demand of, you know, can you add more?
Transportation.
In what sense?
Out of town. So transportation to other, or into town. You know, there's no, or very, very limited commuter.
Like public transportation?
Public transportation. For students, for the elderly.
I kind of would actually put it on a positive, that there's a level that we have at all. Like, when I moved here, like, it was like shocking to me, the level of public transportation we have for basically a bedroom-out-of-the-way community at that time.
Something, if you wanna be on the O B T A line in Los Angeles. You know, I mean, and, I'm coming from the other direction where I didn't expect anything at all, though, I mean, that's the same as...
Yeah, I didn't expect like the level that there was when I moved here. I recognize there's been adjustments to that since, but like the, it's actually shocking at the level we have for being basically a really kind of out-of-the-way community.
With two bus services.
You have University and Coast.
So it's, it's, I'll put it on the list, that makes both sides, I mean, just like this, the SWOT analysis, something can be a strength and something can be a weakness, it doesn't, you know, just because it can land on both sides.
I'm sure it depends on who you ask.
It does.
You know?
Yep. People have different views, different interpretations of what public transportation means, how much you should have, how little you should have.
On the roads, did that mean pretty much, Newmarket roads, 'cause the other part of the roads thing is, I think...
I'm talking about Newmarket roads, the roads that we have to pay.
We have to pay, and that needs work, but I, I think in terms, again, broader basis, 108 is awfully busy.
108 is awful.
Traffic, yeah, traffic is an issue, that's a state issue, but you're absolutely right, traffic.
I think that's the way I...
Yeah, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get, as it gets worse. And, and south of town, you know, it's gonna be all the more apparent that there's a big difference between 108 and North and Downtown, south of downtown, you know, and...
How do you fix some of that right there with 108?
I don't think you can right now, you just say two-lane.
Tolls?
Two-lane road.
A giant, another sacred bridge? Gets you from Durham down to Stratum, and with an exit, like, like trying to get into Chelsea.
That's where planning comes in, planning needs to be cognizant of the things that are approved, and what impact they will have on the traffic.
Just wanted to get it out there.
You can add infrastructure needs.
What types?
I think the water, the water has been upgraded, and, and people are paying for that now. And that's sort of hidden from the tax rate, so the water and sewer, 'cause you're building a wastewater plant, doesn't speak. The rate payers pay that, so it doesn't show up in the tax rate. So a lot of people in this town are not only gonna see a tax increase, so you can put tax increase in there, they're gonna be seeing increases in their water and sewer bills, which is sort of hidden a little bit, because it, it's not apparent when you look at the town tax rate.
It's just sewer, right?
Sewers, yeah. Water we've, we, water they planned, they put the money aside, so they've been able to pay that without increasing the water rates, sewer rates, though, it's going up.
But when they, we'll pull that back up, when they did the, the Maxwell, like, did they have to take out a bond?
We did, but we, the money has already been put aside. They, they've been saving that money for a number of years, but they've been, they can pay off the bond through payments.
So it's been capital reserve, essentially?
Yep.
What else needs attention, needs work?
Well, Gary mentioned planning, but I think, you know, there's a, it sort of comes into the opportunity and needs work, too, because there's a lot of, you know, what part of our, our sewer approval, and the staying, not staying at eight to have a point of three, practice a billion or whatever on nitrogen. There's the non-point pollution, there's a, there's a lot of things going on by agencies, sort of in the area, in terms of climate resiliency. We've had floods here in the past, and there's ways we can, and we still, you know, on, just a month ago, just a fairly brief, but intense rainstorm had flooding begin in our downtown. And, you know, the climate change is expected to create both more floods and more, more droughts and more floods, simultaneously predicted from warm global temperatures. And a lot of those things are, you know, fairly intense enough. You know, we've got both the urban parts, we have a dense, but, you know, kind of urban downtown, which is in strength. And then you also have more rural areas out near the bay, and, and, you know, we have to have smart growth in those areas, or you could face problems from saltwater intrusion or something if we get droughts in the future. So this, this, it's a challenge, even though there are a lot of agencies and boards and U N H that's doing a groundwater modeling in, in, in Newmarket, we still have to sort of have the volunteer boards and councils that we have in place try to figure out how to work with, you know, the planning person, we only have one, you know, really small planning department. And it's, it, it's a lot to try to take all of that information and integrate it into good planning practices.
Also, we've lacked a cohesive and unified, like, across all the government, like, boards and committees, vision for the future of Newmarket. There's not like one unified vision that they're all working, we're all working towards together. Recognizing that never probably be one ideal state, like, we're not trying to build utopia, but something that we often, like, agree on is the multiplicity of elected officials, that we should be working together for, we have a different levers we have with these agents.
That ties into what I was gonna say, which is, we don't have any formal design standards, to my knowledge, in, in, in most of the town. And, and I was gonna finish by saying, I probably won't have full agreement. But what I will say is, I, I was having a discussion with someone about that today, who was right of Genghis Khan. And they said, they said, if the town does not adopt some design standards, it could find itself in a place it doesn't like. So, you know, at some point, you know, we, they, they tried a historic district, and that became, you know, Armageddon. So, and that's fine, because I wasn't thrilled with it when I lived on State Street in Portsmouth. But some level of design standards, you know, so you don't have neon lights blinking all over the place and stuff, that might be something that the town wants to consider, particularly in its more quaint hometown feel areas.
That's good. What else? Yeah, Exeter had that same approach of the unified vision, and, and they combated it with sort of, sort of an unorthodox way, is they sort of forced the planning, the zoning, the historic, and the, and the town selectmen together in one room, which had to have been an unreality type of setting. But they sort of locked themselves in a room and had that sort of frank conversation of, okay, where are we going? We're trying to drive this, you're driving that, and, and try to get on the same page. And I guess it has helped, they've had three or four meetings at this point, so food for thought, something to think of, and, but it's, it's, it can be a tough discussion down there.
You know, one of the strengths ties into a weakness, you know, one of the strengths that you didn't identify was our proximity to U N H. And the potential for Newmarket to have some startup businesses because of the affordability of space along the 108 corridor, you know, for young entrepreneurs, or tech guys, or things, you know, of that nature. That is actually something that Newmarket probably doesn't take, you know, advantage of as much as it could. And, and I think, and I don't know this for fact, but I thought I heard that one of the companies that came in and started doing something left, because they didn't have enough parking, and they didn't have, so it kind of works both ways. You know, the, the, the town is limited as, as to how much it can diversify its tax base, because you're not gonna get Home Depot, not that we want it, or at least I don't want it, or Walmart. But with our 108 corridor, the businesses that I think we have the most likelihood of getting are either small businesses that can satisfy the needs of the town, you know, like, like restaurants, and, and we have a small grocery store, maybe, I think there's one, and maybe a couple of small grocery stores where people can, you know, get their needs. We have one drugstore, things of that nature. So, those things, I think, most of the community uses, because they don't have to leave, like in Rye, they have to leave to go shopping, to pick something up. And most people wouldn't consider Rye a bad place, but the fact is, they'd have to leave and drive fifteen minutes, give or take. So Newmarket has those things, but it's limited as to how much it can really diversify. It's all gonna have to be niche, you know, it's gonna have to be the types of businesses that are either tech startups, or, you know, technology-oriented businesses that service the town, or restaurant-type businesses. I mean, in general.
Smaller type businesses, I call them the obesions.
And I don't think that's a bad thing, I'm just saying it's, there's no, bottom line, there's no silver bullets to blend out the town's, you know, cost of living.
What are our big difficulties for attracting businesses?
Every community around here is competing with a state-owned industrial park. That they can get the land cheaper, and utilities right away.
Right.
It gives a, it gives the residents a place to work, but it, the community loses a potential...
But most of our neighbors have highway. You know, take out P's for a second, Portsmouth obviously has ninety-five, and all sorts of access. You know, Dover has more access, Exeter has, you know, we're really, and I don't necessarily think that's bad, I'm just identifying the fact that there is no silver bullet. The, the town for many years has been looking for a silver bullet, to blend everything out and just be the, the all end all.
Yep.
It's not gonna happen. It certainly isn't gonna happen from a business standpoint, because it just isn't, there isn't enough potential to change the tax rate more than...
Without giving up all the things that we've identified as strengths.
Even if you do, it's the amount of development that's required, it's astronomical to reduce the budget.
Well, if you're gonna, if you, if you're gonna keep notes, you know, for your, you know, for future people to look at, the study that we had done by a consultant was five industrial parks, right now, we have a current industrial park on 108. It would take five of that same level of industrial park to impact the tax rate by a dollar. So, we're not gonna get five industrial parks, number one, and number two, a buck, we sure as hell can go up pretty fast to a buck. But to go the other way is, you know, very onerous, it's, it's a, it's a pretty tall mountain, as you said, over there on the front of it. It's pretty hard to move it the other way.
The combination of the P's and U N H conversation makes me think, and I just don't know if it's a weakness yet, but I guess the fact we don't know it, maybe it makes it. So, that communities around us have chosen, like, what they're gonna develop in, right? U N H or Durham has decided they're gonna make their money through student housing, and there's been a huge boom of student housing, which we have historically been like a student housing community, and I don't know what the impact of this massive student housing build in Durham has been to individuals that have traditionally rented to students in Newmarket. Like, I just don't, you know what I'm saying?
We've actually, I've talked, we've been actually seeing, the student housing numbers dropped because they're staying on campus, but what we're seeing is that after college, housing is, they're moving to Newmarket, and the other community that's getting hit a lot is Dover as well. And that's what you're seeing, you're not seeing those in school, but you're seeing the graduate level, or recent grads coming to do the rentals.
I think our multifamily is a little high, our multifamily housing. It's approaching the high fifties.
It's high for the local area.
It's the highest.
It's ridiculous locally, it does not...
Well, that ties into a plus of ours that I have for Newmarket. And I don't mean it pejoratively, but it's, we do have a large transient population, just moving in and out, I don't mean it's a lot, you know? But it does move, I mean, it, it is, it's pushing sixty percent as far as rental, and I'm not saying everybody moves in and moves out every five seconds, that's not what I'm saying, but it, it's, it's a plus, because people can come in and do that, and we have the rental housing, where people can come in and want to be here. But I also think it's a negative, because it's really hard to pin down exactly who some of, such a large segment of the population is, when the converse to me is people that, as I said, have roots here for hundreds of years. It's, I, I think it's, it's difficult to, to work with, and then for me, the other, the other thing that I think goes along with that is overbuilding and density. I think that is a real threat to us.
I was gonna say, that we, we're actually land poor for...
That ship has kind of sailed.
Okay, then it's a weakness and not an obvious threat, I don't know, I think it's...
How are we land poor? We have so much in conservation.
We do.
Like, the ratio of built to nothing.
Square miles-wise, I think it means developable. I, I just, yeah.
Well, developable.
Yeah, square miles-wise, we're at twelve, most communities around here are about thirty.
Of what is left, I guess my concern would be, you know, that we honor our strengths and not over-approve, I think there's over-approving... Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like...
I think we didn't for a while, and I, I...
You've built quite the identity here on the other side, you know, you have, like you said, a vibrant downtown, your, your town has a history and a story to tell, there's a lot of good stuff here. At one point, do you break the balance, at one point where you've, you know, you've gone away from smart growth or something like that? You mentioned the word smart growth earlier, where density issues...
Or we lose the character, or we ignore all of that history and tradition, we improve downtown, and nobody can get here, because we haven't been taught, like, about parking, or it takes all the character away, and now what's the difference between coming to Newmarket versus going to Portsmouth or Boston or whatever? I mean, it looks similar, so those are the things that, and maybe that ties into what...
Portsmouth is a community that's struggling with that right now.
Saying about, you know, about design standards, I'm not a, a big fan of telling private owners what they can do, but I think a certain look, that there's not flashing neon signs, and it doesn't look like we wanted Sargis, is not a bad thing to do. They'll talk, yeah, so, you know, there's costs and minuses, strengths and weaknesses.
Well, I think that's why people talk about Newmarket as having, I mean, let's, let's be honest, if the mills hadn't been developed, yeah, if the mills hadn't been developed, we'd be having a very different discussion, so the mill, the mill was the predicate for, you know, that's the base. And from that, and that's exactly what the Quas study said, you know, build out from the mill, north and south, and, you know, do it smart. And I think we're trying to do it, but it kind of gets mucked up.
Sounds like you are, so, which is good. There's always gonna be some growing pains periodically, right? I mean, it's just the nature of government, and times change, and it's changing rather quickly, and government has to catch up to that change, which is always...
When it takes forty minutes or thirty minutes to get from Stratum Circle to Newmarket...
I believe it.
From four o'clock in the afternoon...
It was a slow ride in tonight.
From four o'clock in the afternoon, on most days, particularly in the spring summer, till about six-thirty, something's wrong.
It takes how many minutes?
Thirty-five, forty minutes.
On most days?
No, no, from three-thirty, four o'clock until six o'clock.
I understand that, on most days.
If you try to come in, you, where'd you come in from, you said it took a while?
108.
No, no, which way?
101, it came off Exeter ten.
Yes, it came around the circle.
Yeah. And it was a, I mean, the rain didn't help, but yeah, it was, it was a slow go, so, yeah, totally good. What else? Before we wrap up this part?
Real quick, you said tax rate earlier, and I just want to like, I think that it is a slow, uncontrollable, unstoppable growth of the tax rate. It's just like the creep, right? But it's gonna happen, like, either you freeze everyone's salary and say we're not gonna obey net federal laws around healthcare, and so we're gonna freeze our tax rate, or like, there's these things that we, like, either can't control or can't, and shouldn't stop, just making sure, like, our employees can continue to live with cost of living, that is just invariably pressing it up and up and up. And, so I think it's almost gonna be death by a thousand cuts.
My focus wasn't so much on employees.
Just, just from... Oh, no, I'd like, I'm just saying, like, it's not like massive increases on the town side, like, it's not like, I know there's other areas where we might see, like, large jumps in it, but I am more of the, like, there's this slow, ever-going creep, that eventually we're gonna turn around and be like, whoa. Like, so I think we need to think creatively about how we're going to, like, deliver services of the same quality, without, um, and somehow at least slowing that ever-growing creep.
Yeah.
The human resource expense is, it's expensive.
To me, it's priorities. I mean, I, I, you know, I didn't win the vote, and that's okay, but, you know, we did sidewalks last year, which is totally appropriate for the area. But you can't do sidewalks, you can't do roads, you can't do everything, or you can, you just pay for it.
Yep. Yep.
And so, you know, I think prioritization is gonna be very important for the town.
Well, I think that's like you said, prioritization and a balance, because you can't just stop and let the roads go and let everything tumble. Um, you have to have some kind of balance and you've gotta keep some kind of priority, some kind of plan, whether it's capital reserve fund, take money from that, whatever the case may be, but that's something that, because you can't just stop.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because you don't have to rein it the well. Steve knows the communities around here, they're, the communities like Berlin and Franklin, they stopped. And now they struggle. So when you do stop, um, you know, to pave a road is, it's nothing for them, because it doesn't even put a dent in what they have to pay. They're now looking at massive road bonds to even just get a topcoat down on their road. So you're a hundred percent right. You have to, you have to stay the course, but how do you combat the creep? And it's not an easy thing to do. The only way to do that sometimes is through efficiencies, and that's.
You prioritize.
Yeah.
We're flirting with thirty dollars a pound as well. You know, I and, and a number of people that I respect very much will not be able to afford to live here, even though they're third, fourth of their generation. They're not able to stay there and a lot of people are already gone. So that's kind of, you know, what I'm looking at is how do we, how do we keep that from happening as much as possible? While we understand that we can't control every individual taxpayer, personal financial situation and all, I mean, we can't do that, but that we have that thirty here. And, um, you know, to me, the character and the history of New Market has changed a lot.
Yep. Anything else before we move on to the next?
You don't wanna see us getting on wrestling mats, so you should move on.
I'm not sensing a wrestling match. I've been to some interesting selection council meetings over the years, so.
You can change.
This is a very nice one so far.
That's because we're being politically correct.
Okay.
We are on television.
It usually curbs things pretty quickly, so. Anything else on, you know, good and bad before we move on? I wanna be respectful of your time. So I'm gonna give you like two.
Lower our insurance rate.
I'm gonna take that.
One, real quick, I hate to say this, but real quick on Twitter.
Yep.
We have a very low debt ratio as a community. Our debt is like tremendously low. And it's been through like the long-term, like some level of long-term planning around capital reserve funds and capital group.
And being, and being parsimonious to some degree.
Good.
We've had some town managers in the past that, you know, were, were probably not the best. But I will say this, they were fairly frugal. You know what I mean? So I think that.
Let me say, we don't, we don't bond virtually anything as a town. We like have probably more capital reserve funds than Manchester, but.
Put the cash away, put the cash away.
Yeah.
Good. That's, it's a good option. It's a good strategy. There's nothing wrong with that.
The Yankees are the good.
It's good.
That's what we do.
It runs throughout most of the state. I've, I've heard the phrase a million times, cash is king, and that will buy you rather than bonding out ten, twenty years.
They're ready for a thirty-year bond.
What's that? We've stopped thirty-year bonds in my community, thank God. I'm like, uh, how long are we gonna pay for this thing? You know, so, how about like nine years? Good. So we moved on from that. Hopefully you're, you're happy with that. What I want you to do is take two or three minutes, now that we've sort of had this, you know, initial discussion here. You have your homework assignment, I saw somebody have it in front of you. Take a few minutes and, and write down two or three goals that you want to see the town succeed over the next year or so. This will involve the entire council administrator, so I'll call on everybody. Everybody will get a turn, a chance to give us their two or three goals. Um, what will happen is, uh, Shelley and I will get them down on paper, and then we'll take a quick five, six-minute break. Uh, and I'll try and very quickly consolidate those goals that you all listed. Because what's gonna happen is, there's gonna be common themes and threads from all your goals. They're gonna sort of mesh and build together. Uh, and then come up with a, hopefully a good four, five-goal list after it's all said and done. Because what happens is, we can stand here tonight and we can give Steve twenty-five goals to achieve with his staff, but it's, it's, it's not attainable for someone to leave here and say, I'm gonna get these twenty-five goals done over the next year in, in town government. And so what we try to do is find four or five goals that the, that the, that you and the staff can achieve over the next year. And then there are the extra goals. And if those goals can be picked off one at a time, then so be it. But what we really wanna do is focus you down on four or five goals. So you give me two or three apiece, and then we'll.
Can I be philosophical or are you talking tangible, you know, like?
Whatever you want to be. It could be both. It could be philosophical, it could be tangible. You could say, you know, I wanna, I wanna pave X amount of roads by twenty-twenty.
And you'll take off of that and rework it and make it sound really.
Fairly nice, into some sort of rapport. So that's what happens.
Everything we pay you.
We'll put in a claim for new roads and he'll build them next month.
We'll cover roads.
It's called suburbanity.
So, does that make sense? Okay, so take the next couple minutes and, and work out your two or three goals and we'll get that done.
Do you wanna read my names?
Yeah, you wanna do that?
Okay. Everyone's good to eat.
It's two eighties.
You have a lot of greens.
We have a lot of green.
Sorry, it's missing a green.
Well, there's no blue. I mean, you have a market go.
We have a blue up here.
Yeah, I couldn't find any market.
Yeah, there's a blue there.
So, we got them. We just dip them. Like, they're all green.
We have all greens in them.
Apparently.
We're thinking Carl, that's all.
Yeah, he said he had a bunch in his car. Okay, how we live?
Everybody ready? Why don't you start with the people that are ready?
Okay.
Dale, go ahead.
So, the ones I wrote down, and I said capital improvement plan and, and well, that's Phil's baby anyway, so I know he'll have. But I, I agree. I think that's, we need better long-term planning at the council level and that's hard. My number two would be for, and, and I, I wanna preface that by saying, there's some things that we've identified as, as, as continuation goals that I think are really important, like shared services will exclude, we haven't talked too much about here. But we've already identified that as something that, that's really supposed to happen for, over the next six months, on the execution on that. And it's a, it's a big deal. It's really important for the town. But I, I think what we're talking about here are things that are longer in nature than that.
Long-term shared services.
Well, so the shared administrative services is what, is not on the list of three things I was gonna give you, because that's already in goals that Steve has for the remainder of this fiscal year, the next six months.
Okay.
It's a big initiative, but it's not on this. It should be, but.
Basically, no, we're having a shared finance directorate of school.
Yeah.
Having a shared.
I'm so envious.
Facilities director of the school.
I can bring that up under my section.
Yeah, it, it's outstanding. I think you're probably one of the first.
I think so.
I mean, that's groundbreaking.
So, the second one I wrote down, that's why I didn't write that one down. But the one, second one I wrote down is, I think the, the, as you mentioned what's going on in Exeter, I think for the, the town council here can be more engaged with planning boards and other boards around things that have to do with executing on a shared vision for New Market, better, better planning, kind of zoning discussions, climate adaptation. Those things are being worked on, but I don't think that the town council is engaged as much as it probably should be in this discussion at this point. And the third thing I wrote down.
Resolutions in order.
Progressions at our council meetings have probably done a little bit of this. You know, a lot of people, we sort of have.
It, it's hard to do, right? When you, you have a list of people that want to see you that night and have things to talk to you about, it's hard to.
We've had some short meetings, so the, the point is, we, we probably could have, to Dale's point, chosen maybe not this particular event, but things that are in this genre.
Yep.
That we could, that had a little more meat on the bone, so we could have spent twenty minutes to thirty minutes on. And we, we really haven't, so.
Good, good stuff. Thank you, Dale.
Someone else's job.
Amy T. Amy.
Okay, I had down, um, regionalization. I'm just gonna read what I wrote.
Yep.
Okay, you need to do it. Regionalization, partnering with relevant communities, including, um, the school here and education. I have education services, whether that's our school, U N H, whatever it is, it's, it's the regionalization, anywhere and everywhere.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, number two, I have managed growth with associated costs of services. To keep the town, to keep town living overall affordable to many while providing essential services. So I think we had some discussion about that, just to fill it in, in, in other communities that just stopped and, and said, okay, well, here's the magic bullet. We're putting in a big industrial park and, and making near a dollar. And then not realizing that the cost of town services went up two dollars.
Okay.
That's kind of the background on there. So that's police and roads and sewer and all of that.
Good.
And number three, I have, um, a goal is to maintain the character of our small town, traditions, families. And that to me includes choosing our development wisely. And things that are relatively low impact, like we talked about on the economic development committee, continuing care facilities.
Okay.
Also, we need to set that type of thing.
Good. That's great. Hop over here. Gary?
You want me?
Sure.
I would like to, uh, with, with respect to budgeting, I'd like to set a number. I, I thought you were gonna.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'd like to set a number that we'd like to, to spend to, not back into a number. So we don't, we don't say, okay, we want, I'm just making up a number. We don't say, okay, we want the town's tax rate to be, you know, six dollars or eight dollars or twelve dollars or whatever it is. We sort of, you know, um, have a general idea of what the budget is, what the, um, department's gonna ask for. And then we sort of tweak it a little bit and we budget to it. But we don't really, in our minds, at least I haven't seen that, have a number in our mind and say, okay, we're gonna stick to that number and we're gonna, we're gonna, um, make that num, we're gonna make that number happen. We're not just gonna back into a number, because that's the number that comes up.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like, and, and that ties in with number two, which is really prioritizing, because we can do everything.
What do you wanna prioritize?
Well, I, I, what do I mean by it?
Yep.
I mean, if you have a leak in the roof, you don't buy a couch.
Okay.
So you do what you need to do. You need, you do what, what is imperative. And then if you have extra, or you have a surplus, then you can chip away at things that are, that are wants. But you focus on needs.
Yep.
Because, you know, the, we're very shortly gonna be, the rubber is gonna be hitting the road, you know, as far as the New Market tax.
Okay.
And, um, last, and I brought it up a little bit earlier, in a different venue, um, I'd like to do a zero, or see a zero-based budgeting at least once in my lifetime for the town. You know, at least while I've been focused on it. So start at a budget and then justify the budget from zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve? Address the parking issues as well. The second, um, invest in infrastructure, road and facilities. Go so what we said earlier, that some communities stopped investing, it costs more in the long run versus continuing investing. Uh, the final is implement a long-range plan on development in the community. What do we wanna have in the next, what are we gonna look like in the next ten, fifteen years?
Can you just repeat that at the beginning?
Yeah, um, implement a long-range plan for development in the community.
Just on that, Steve, we, we spent so much time on a charrette last, there was so.
Yep.
Who, who did that? Who came in? I can't remember.
The Stratford regional plan.
So Stratford did that. You know, we've had Quas study, we've had so many studies. It seems like nobody takes all of our studies, because I thought that Stratford Regional that Saturday, I think Amy was, we were all kinda there, a lot of us. You know, we spelled that out. The, the town did. I mean, people were very vocal. They wanted certain things. But I think what happens is, that's where they're at, and then the planning board has rules and regulations that they abide by in zoning. And so then someone comes in and says, well, I wanna do this. And it's like the antithesis of what people were saying they wanted.
Yeah.
And the next thing you know, you've got something you don't want.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm speaking metaphorically.
No, I get it.
And that's, you know, that is a real disconnect. And if, if the council and the planning board did nothing else in, in the future, they ought to get together and listen to what the people said at those charrettes. And, and follow some level of guideline, because it doesn't happen. And there's no one to blame in particular. It's just it falls through the cracks.
Yep. Great point.
And that, it's really Steve's point, but.
Yeah, it happens in every community, really. It's.
But we just dropped them all.
You set up these long-range, posing a lot of communities look like this, and then you have a zoning case or a planning case, you say, oh, well, yeah, we'll forget about this one. But not like the long-range plan, sometimes we adopt, you know, when you approve of development or approve of.
But a long-range plan is never a legal binding, though.
No, it's not.
Like that.
No, you're right. But right now, they're rewriting, while we're on the subject. We're, we're working on the master plan. They're working on the types of, um, um, businesses and the types of zoning they want. They're rewriting all this right now. This would be the time to, to focus. If we were gonna do anything in the last five months, if we had a joint meeting, for example, with the planning board, and had that type of discussion, you know, based on the information that came out of those meetings, that would be a very valuable thing, because then they could integrate it into it. And then the council could, you know, pass the ordinance or, you know, make the law, so to speak. Because that's what we do. I mean, the planning board generally works it, and then they give it to us, and then we, you know, have to authorize it.
Some stuff is coming from the planning board.
No, I understand, but it's pretty low-hanging fruit from my.
Because the nice part about your community is that you do control that. As you're a charter form of government, you can, you can make those decisions on the zoning regulations. Is that right? It doesn't have to go to the town referendum or something. And that's, it's huge, it's powerful.
Well, but they just kind of become nebulous. They just kinda become a blur.
Yeah, and I agree. And I know they, I know the planning board is still going through some things, but it would be, um, great if we would have that joint meeting and discuss the things that came out of the, I think it was two years ago now, wasn't it?
Yeah, between that and the Quas study, we'd have more than enough information.
Yeah, but it would just be to kind of.
Throw it around.
Get things moving.
That's great.
Well, I think one of the things that happens too is that, I mean, it's there, it's in the master plan.
Right.
They put that chapter in there. I went and I looked at it, actually in preparation for this meeting, and. I went and I looked at it, actually in preparation for this meeting, and so that vision from those forums is, it's there, it's just a matter of...
Implement.
Implementing it and revisiting it on a regular basis. I mean, it's easy, it's in a document on our website, but we're never, you know, kind of shelved.
But the goal would be to...
We don't go back to it.
The goal would be to take the information that comes out of the charrette.
Absolutely.
Right? Write an ordinance, implement the ordinance, and then if you want to revisit it, we don't even get to the part about rewriting it, meaning as an ordinance. We kind of just say, wouldn't that be nice? And people, not in person like you, write these things down on a bill, you know, a board.
No, I get it, yeah.
And then we all go, yeah, that'd be great, and people leave kind of happy.
Yeah.
And people...
That's the end of that.
Yeah, and then people like you say, whoa, what a great community, people have so many great opinions and they have so many thoughts, and then, but it never kind of gets on the paper.
That's just, because it's just the people who end up showing up at the Saturday morning for the charrette, who are not elected anyways, are just, they're members of the community whose voices matter. Well, I know, I know, but I'm saying they're, they're members of the community whose voices matter, but then it's on the planning board to write what they think as elected officials, they think the zoning should look like, or the, the master plan should look like, and it's on the council, again, elected by people, to pass the ordinances that impact the zoning. And if the people don't like it, in toto in the community, they can unelect the individuals that are writing that. The charrette, I think, should inform, but it should not become the, because those 20 to 50 people got together, are the ones that showed up on a Saturday morning, again, unelected to be in that position, just voicing their opinion, that should not become the, we have to obey this, that is the way the community...
I, I agree with you, but between that and the studies that we have paid tens of thousands of dollars for, really, since I've been on the council, literally, probably 75 grand we've spent that different administrators have been nice enough to find the money for. Right, yeah. Very, very little of that, and, you know, just one, because that's a good point. The council, you know, and I've, I've had this discussion on occasion with Steve and other people, the council kind of has to wait for the planning board, the council, you know, because we can't step on the planning board's toes and... So, you know, that's where maybe aggregating a meeting, because it really does fall through the cracks a lot.
I think I see a common goal.
And it's not just the 50 people, because in all fairness, and you're right, 50 to 75 people showed up, Phil, but most of the things that were articulated and elocuted at those meetings were reinforced...
Or not over again.
By, by the consultants that we've hired, multiple different consultants, and, and people that were there did not read those reports, I can assure you of that. But there's been not a lot of action actually implemented, that's the point.
Okay. So, you know...
And there is the provision in our charter that says that at least annually, the chair of the council, the planning board, and I think the budget committee will meet.
Yeah, we met last year, last year.
So, I mean, and that, and the reason behind that, I think, when we're talking about it, was to start to alleviate some of that.
To align, was to align priorities from here. Yep. Amy.
Okay. Okay, so the first one I have, just to practice this, I know is on your, but I don't see it as an island.
You're the second person to say that today.
I don't see this one as an island, I see this as having a lot of work-together input. So, based on the report that we're getting, is decide what to implement for possible efficiencies from the report.
We have an MRI efficiency study that's going to be public within a day.
Okay.
So...
You said it could talk.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so decide what we're going to implement from that report, and then move forward with, with starting to implement those pieces.
Okay. Got it.
All right. And then, I'll wait for you, okay. And then continue, this is another one that started, but I see a lot of it that we're going to have to do some more work on down the road, is continue to seek places where the town and the school can work together operationally to create more efficiencies. We're starting down that road, but I think it's going to be an ongoing process. Okay, and then the last one, this kind of, okay, so I'll just read it now, is continue to look for, to the future, to plan for items that will be needed for funding, like what kind of funding and what kind of updates we're going to be needing, so we don't get behind the eight ball. So this is like with capital reserve fund, CIP, make sure that we continue to, to look at that.
Good, thank you. One that hasn't been brought up yet is the CIP. I'm sorry, guys.
I was like, whoa, that's like... We said it so seriously, so... First I was like, you're joking. I'm like, don't look at it.
See, I told you, we talk about things all the time, and then...
Long-term detailed improvement planning, I guess.
Same thing, the long-term CIP, sort of...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Specifically on our yields, you know, or proactive, you know, or spending.
Is that, is it, Steve, is, because your current CIP only goes out five, six, 10 years, or...
By charter, we go out six years. The problem we had is the process, we, we've improved the process immensely since five years ago, but we're just not there yet.
Okay.
And we're trying to get there.
You're getting a bunch of individual department plans, as opposed to a unified, this is the town's capital improvement plan. Okay, just so we write the report, we got to know, does it...
A lot of plugging in 5,000, 5,000, 5,000, 5,000, for, you know, 10, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. Whatever. Okay. Next one, Paul, sorry.
All right, it has been said. I guess funding synergies between the town council and...
The school board.
Working together.
Continue to the school board.
Continue to hold.
Yep.
Yeah. Having the last yield that I've been part of, I thought was extremely helpful.
Yep.
Learned a lot. It was good, but no blood, no sweat, no stitches, so we're good.
That was a good thing.
Being recorded, watching. I think one thing that actually has not been brought up is the looking at technology in the town for the long term, either digging up roads, other than fiber, are they, you know, instead of being reactive towards certain needs, being proactive, putting a plan together for buying computers, buying security, security is big these days, and taking a look at it not necessarily from a capex, which scares a lot of people, you can see the, the big dollar signs when you look at capital expenditures, and when you go to operational expenditures, it's, it's much less. Looking at fault, you know, you're paying it a lot, doing that, something else you can pay for those, none of the days, so. So I haven't really seen much in regards to the, what we're doing for technology, but would like to see that locked up.
Okay. Good.
I guess to go along with that is potentially working alongside or with, you know, rate paid association, look at the monopolies, Comcast and others that, we're spending more money with that, we don't have any other choices.
Yeah.
Like, I guess, I guess we do, if you want to have DISH, you want to have the other satellite services, but if you want to have speed into that, a lot of people are locked into Comcast and that stuff, and...
How would you change, I mean, how would the town, would you approach changing that?
Working with other towns, other communities to try to bring something else in.
Yeah, it's really all the other options to bring another player into the scene.
I mean, I think we have with Verizon, this is fair point, so it's share a fair point, and it's, it's fantastic, but it's, this fair point even not where I live.
You're almost out of this one.
I don't think I can...
We can get it. The focus is on the school. Do you want any other future shared services with a neighboring community, or is it just your focus to only be with the school at this point? I just, as we write the report, I just, that's the, the common theme is with the school, because you have something great going on here, but...
I think because we're, we're working towards something, yeah, very particular with the school.
Okay.
Certainly, if we could find efficiencies and develop relationships with other communities, by all means, but I think that we have something specific happening with the school, so that's, that was...
Correctly, we've beaten our heads against the wall a couple times with other communities. Have you? Okay.
I mean, it's great, you can throw it in there.
Right.
The other, well, and then the other, I have one that is to increase parking and, you know, work on that in our downtown area. And then to continue to invest in our natural resources as a way to attract businesses and increase participation in recreational activities in the public community.
In recreational. Okay. Those are great. Thank you. Phil.
Something that hasn't been said yet is I would like to re-annex the area formerly known as South New Market, by any means necessary.
The governor of Las may have something.
I'm saying here, all of them, man.
And you're saying that a lot back.
People on the tax base, it's a new field.
They want to take over your...
New Fields used to be South New Market.
Hey, oh, really? Do you remember a couple of years ago, actually, the police, you want to go through that again?
Any means necessary. I'm talking New Market militia. So, no, not breaking grounds here, but a unified, integrated, cross-department, community-wide capital improvement plan. All the ways I could find of modifying it, maybe it's P more than just one.
I told you that was coming.
It was coming down. Going to join hands and sing.
I'd like to see five-year budget plans that are built upon best current knowledge, expected priorities, and planned work in order to inform council policy and current year budgeting. Right now, we get five-year budgets that are better than what we got before, which is no five-year budgets, but they generally are just like this year and then a bunch of like copy and paste of the old years. Yeah. Which does not show what I think is the, what we need to be doing, which is honestly looking, what are our expenses going to be over the next five years? So we truly are making decisions in the short term based on the best predictions we can have in the, the long term or medium term, so. Okay. And I would like to, I kind of cram two into one here, it's pretty creative of me. So I'd like to see an expanded downtown that includes an executable, either private government or private-public partnership, plan to expand the parking available. So, the way that...
Expanded downtown.
Expanded downtown, that in, plan to expand the downtown so that it's not just where it is now, right? Like urban infill is like what we're really going to get for any sort of economic development outside of the areas that the EDC was looking at. And that means like North Main, that means South Main and/or 108 heading towards...
That was the last thing.
Yeah. Reuse of lots in the... So use those lots in the downtown area that are not doing anything. But included in this look at expanding downtown has to be some way to address the parking situation businesses have. And I think that could, that does not need to be a government lot, that could be a private lot, that could be a private public partnership, it could be anything, but some way to address the parking. Got it. Anyone else have anything to add before we just sort of, it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, just like two-minute recess? So just going to filter the yards again.
So that two minutes means, in reality, 8:32.
No, we're going to take a recess and just turn the microphone off. I think I, we, I pretty much got it figured out, so.
How about a limo ride for anybody without a car? Downstairs.
Downstairs.
How long?
He's in the basement.
I'm the one person that watches this.
It's always surprising people actually do watch them.
We're on. Downstairs.
Yes.
Downstairs, yeah.
Okay, take, take it away.
Okay, so what we tried to do was.
Just call the synopsis.
Yeah, it's a, it's a quick synopsis and it's gonna get dressed up a whole lot more when we, I have a chance to go back to the office and sort of sit down and type it out and think through it and make some further recommendations. But I just wanted to get a general okay from you that you think these are the topics and the goals that you as a council and essentially the administrator and staff will hopefully buy in and work on with you. But I want, so I'll mention the four topics here and then I want to try and put some deliverable dates around or what deliverables look like a little bit. Because it's hard to say, well, we want to increase parking. Well, how are we gonna do that? You know, what, what, what's the method? What's the path that we're gonna take to increase?
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain.
That's Phil's favorite.
Real popular.
Two worst words in the language.
That's gonna get you re-elected. So, number one.
I don't want to be re-elected. How's that?
I thought you would say that. Number one, I think it couldn't be any clearer and we heard it from budgeting across the board and CIP time to time we hit. I'll use the word unified, cause I like that, a unified townwide CIP. Everyone in agreement on that? Pretty standard. Your town charter says one thing, but you want something different or something a little bit more enhanced.
I thought our charter said.
Says capital improvement, but it does not discuss this. Well, capital improvement generally by statute is five years, but it doesn't say unified.
I just actually said six, I don't. Fun number. Some towns, some communities go out ten, some go out twelve, some go out eight. It really just depends on what your comfort level is and what, how far out you want to look to see what plow trucks coming down the road in 2025 or whatnot that needs to be replaced. Or what fire, piece of fire apparatus that these days isn't getting any cheaper to replace, so. So I put this as a goal. How do I, how do I get this to make you successful? So what, when do you want it to be implemented by? When, how do you want it to start? It's sort of a goal that sort of falls, ultimately unfortunately falls on Steve's lap.
Yeah, put it right under the administrator to do, to do list.
So, a lot of times these goals, that's where they, that's where they falls on the staff. So, you know, when, if, if Steve was to work on unified townwide CIP, when do you want that delivered by? And if you give me a date of next week, I will push back. So, poor Steve. In that sense.
Well, again, we, we just went through the near-term goaling on that.
Yep.
I think it's important. He already has one of his goals that's related to, what was the, what was the language around the CIP that you were gonna deliver by the end of fiscal year?
Which is June 30th.
I have implemented CIP.
Process.
Process.
Yeah.
There was a process.
There was a process, yeah.
So how many months before the budget can we get, you know, that's really the question, kind of sort of, right? So would that be June? Would it be?
Yeah, we don't start writing the budget till August, so June.
So if you could do it by June, then at least the, the council could review it and sign off on it and feel good about it.
So Steve, you're comfortable like at, at June 2017? To get the process in place? Yes. And then to implement the actual CIP would be, and remember, I still have to go to a CIP committee separately from the council.
So is October 1st doable?
Yeah, by law, they have to present one to me by then.
To me, it would be the next budget season and the next budget that is brought to the council should have a unified townwide CIP in it, not just the hodgepodge of CIP requests that we see.
When's the next budget season? We don't, uh, next September, next October.
That's why he said June, July, you know.
To have it in, in place.
Yeah. So I'm gonna put six of seventeen.
Process.
Build process. Ten of seventeen, deliverable. Is that doable, Steve?
Yeah. It is.
Build the process by June, something to deliver to you by October of seventeen that shows a unified CIP, yeah.
Okay.
Question asked and answered.
Good. Number one, done.
Next.
It's pushing me along.
He gave you a nine o'clock deadline.
I know. We're moving in on it. But this is important stuff, just tell you.
Well, no, but you answer the questions. Good. There you go.
Increase parking in the downtown by exploring private, public partnerships, okay? So again, with, I think, I think everybody said in order to expand the downtown, to expand the vitality of it, you have to have more parking. So it's a good goal to have. We need to have more parking in the downtown, but how are we gonna do it? What's the way to do it?
We, we've talked about a few things.
Okay.
I don't, you know, they're not perfect. There's some parking and I don't know if it's even, I don't know if things have changed, but there was some parking to the south of Town Hall, this away, I guess that's south. There was some parking on the other side of the street that's a little further away near the tracks or, or, you know, the property that we paid whatever a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's not perfect, but there are some areas that.
Are we gonna identify them tonight or are we just setting a timeline?
Yeah, well, no, he asked, would you do this? So I mean, those are two areas and.
Right, and going with that, I think we need to kind of look at it like we did with the first one where it's like, look at it and figure it out by one date and then start implementing it by another date. Because it's not all gonna be done this year.
Wasn't there a parking committee or didn't we have it?
Never was.
Never been a parking. No, there's a highway.
Highway committee could be.
But there was some committee that was trying to take it. There was, in somewhere in the last few months, somebody had talked about it.
Well, just so you know, the third area was off Bay Road, if memory serves me.
Yeah.
So there were three areas that we did identify.
There is a, a private entity looking at it and I don't want to get too into it because of the non-publicity area.
So is that something we can identify options and can by the end of the fiscal year and then?
That's gonna be way off. It's not gonna be a fiscal year one.
Okay.
Now, how about like, one, I think it's too limiting to say private-public partnerships. I think there's, like, it could be a government solution. It could be a purely private solution, but just a solution to the parking problem. So I don't like the fact that it's limited there as to just private-public partnerships.
Okay.
The, I'm just wrong, counsel.
I took that to mean to add it, public and or.
Public-private partnerships is a very like specific term to talk about how public and private sector agencies work to, entities work together to get something done.
He's saying anyway you can do it, do it.
Anyway you can do it, do it, right?
Yeah.
The, so I would, to me, I would like to see like option by like the end of the calendar year, twelve months to come up with like a viable option for long-term parking, but that, but again.
December 17th?
No.
We could, to come up with the options of target options?
You're just saying a different way, options.
I'm just saying options. I'm not saying make a move, not buy anything, not do anything. Just, are there parcels out there, I use the word parcels, but that could be future parking in your downtown? We identify, yes. You can identify. Yeah. Okay. If we're saying.
So what's the timeline? What's the timeline on identifying?
No, that's not over yet.
What's the timeline on identifying?
I would say identify end of calendar year, beginning of 18. Yep, so by the end of 17, would that be okay if I put that?
There you go.
Okay.
I just, I suppose he says, I know what I want to try to sell, but options are not necessarily saying these are areas of land we could take over for parking.
Correct.
Options could be like we will partner with this private entity in order to create a space to park. Or options could be, we will incentivize a private organization coming in and taking over a spot to park, like through whatever vehicles we have necessary. We have available to us.
But on top of these goals that you're doing here, you've also assigned additional goals earlier that we want to make sure that, you know, some of these are townwide versus individual. I want to make sure I can implement them both. And some of these aren't matching what they're.
Well, but GSB and council goals, this to me, and again, I mean it is, is that if the council, particularly the incoming council, can be a little more involved without micromanaging, then we could also be here to help and not just go, okay, still you do that, I mean, whatever way might work, so.
Yeah.
Not hanging, not hanging you out specifically.
And that'd be my only concern.
But these are the council goals that you also have to implement in the normal course of a business day and we get that, but we have some towns that we have to park in. So if that's doable, it's.
What I think we really need to do, not to address, we need to evaluate how much parking we need. You know, how much of a problem it is, you know, specifically and, and how close to the downtown proximity-wise, you know. That, that type of information we should be able to get sooner than a year, from my perspective. You know, to just understand the problem and what it might take to resolve it, not to. I mean, Portsmouth's been dealing with parking going on four or five years now and nobody can find a space. But I think they've been working on identifying places where they can do it.
Yep.
So I don't even know that we know how many extra spaces we need at this point. I mean, if somebody said.
It's part of the planning process.
Yeah, if somebody said, what do you want?
Somebody, your planning commissions can do some of those parking studies for you. They did it for us in the Lakes region. And they go out there and they sit there all day and count, come and go and high time. So some of that basic data probably can be run through your planning commission, your RBC.
I don't think we've ever done that.
So, option, but we'll put some of that in the report. So I won't limit it to public-private partnerships, but basically options meaning that it could be anything from parcels to, you know, working with individuals and businesses and whatnot and as people commit. You okay with that?
Number three.
Number three. Continue relations with the school board and say you still have to find further efficiencies and seal the current deal. So you have your current deal that you're working on right now, which is the finance director, Steve? Finance enough facilities. Facilities director and then. Two different positions. Get those done and then continue to have further conversations about working together in other areas. Makes sense? I, I'm not gonna put much of a deliverable around that, a date, except for you have, you're hoping in six months to seal. Is that what I heard earlier within?
Do you think it's happening, Steve?
Okay, seven days. I won't put a date on that, but it looks like it's happening and then further exploration. Makes sense? Okay, number four, Mr. Chair. This one is.
Meeting with the planning board.
Yeah, meeting with the planning board, discuss current growth, zoning and, and the plans that haven't been implemented over the years. So you have a series of plans. You have a report coming out soon on efficiencies. A discussion might need to be had with the planning board and if you have any other land use type goals, like historic district commission or anything like that, might be good to have them in the mix to talk about growth, sustainable. You don't have, smart growth. Yeah, it's just another layer, so. When do you want to have that meeting by?
Well, what I would ask Steve is if we were gonna, maybe gonna execute something of like, you know, the charrette we have with the Stratton Regional, because you have, I'm assuming all those, those reports.
I have the, right, we do.
If we, if we could somehow maybe aggregate that in conjunction with, you know, the cost study. You know, not, not, not a document, not something, you know, thirty pages because people just gloss over, but something that they could review like two or three pages and then we can have a joint meeting before the end of.
And I'm actually gonna punt at the Council Pike. I don't know where the committee is. Cause there was a committee looking over the charrette, correct, to have great recommendations for the master plan.
The charrette made its way into the future land use chapter. That's incorporated into that.
It's a visioning statement in there.
There's a, the subcommittee which I've, I've been on met in the, the last planning board. They, they accepted and agreed to it and matter of fact, there's supposed to have been a copy of it and I could, I'll check in on that. There was a document we put out and said, okay, out of the recommendations that have been made earlier, these are the things we're going to do right away and it laid out the sequence. So we have put, put, you know, priorities, we prioritize all the next steps.
Yeah, I asked you about that last meeting and then I, if memory serves me, I asked you when you thought that it would come to the council for action. And I think it's gonna, it's not all gonna come. It's gonna come sort of in layers.
Right, and there are some things that are coming, you know, essentially that they're saying this is, these are, you know, these have to be regulatory things. They're really not going to be acted on by the planning board. They're gonna come straight to the council for what does the council choose to do about these things? So, so some of those things are going to be, you know, I, I think that what I, we haven't set the meeting yet, but I, my expectation was the subcommittee is gonna probably be in the months of December to continue to work on that. You know, now that it's more or less been approved at the planning board level, what's, what, what our, you know, start to put out, what's started to make things happen. Come up with these zoning changes that will come back to the planning board for approval and then come to the council, so. Or, you know, for letters to be drafted. Somebody was, I'm gonna be working on a letter sent to the council on some of the things that were drafted, so. That's, that's kind of where the process is and we've got a planning board meeting coming up in two weeks, right, you know, so.
So, I completely understand that process and I recognize that would be like the process for like anything's changed by having a go for the planning board to, zoning change to us. I have issue with the way that is written in that the planning board is a standalone elected committee and that seems, that reads to me a lot like, this is the way it's written, the big brother of the council coming down to the planning board and saying, you know, what for? Whereas I, I feel like if the planning board and council met at the beginning of the year to align goals so that like we knew what the work plan was gonna be to say, this is like together what we like see based on the stuff that council let me write up, like needs to happen and here are the steps. Like the way that's seen right now, to me, seems much more.